This is our Monday, September the 8th of 25. Work session agenda. And before we start, let me do a roll call first. Mr. Burris.
Brother.
Mr. Tindall.
Here.
Mr. Lucas. Mr. Cox.
Here.
Cheers here. Okay. Before we start, I'll ask Mr. Burris, he would lead us in prayer.
Father has. Lord, we thank you, Father, for how you blessed us in so many wonderful ways and pray, God, you bless us, oh God, that we deliberate in the business of this county. We pray, God, you continue to bless this great county, this great city. Blessed inhabitants, oh God, and we pray, God, you just continue to look upon us. Keep us strong, oh God, and let us stand your word and in your will. Father, we ask, oh God, you just continue to be with us, blessed though that are sick maybe among us and our family members. And we pray, God, you just continue to be with us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The guest speakers, we got. Thomas Littlejohn come up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here again to, uh, my name is Thomas Littlejohn. On 1192 Pascal Road, Waycross. I'm here again to bring up the, uh, issue of the complaint about the hazardous, dangerous overgrowth on Pascal Road. I noticed in your last meeting, uh, when you had the call meeting. Uh, you held, um. This week what I got here meeting. You brought up about Needham Road. For rounding the curve is dangerous, the vehicles needing to slow down. You can't see for the bushes. And there are some roads like in same way in Manor and Dixie Union. But there's no mention about Pascal Road. And we've been calling and complaining for 10 years at least. With no, no solution. That's five miles away. And we called at least as latest as June 17th. Called the road company, road department about those growth and dangers. Called July 7th, 25th. Called about the road overgrowth, dangerous condition. Called on August 19th. Called the road department about the overgrown blind spots. Called August 19th. I called Chairman Thrift, mentioned it to him about the dangerous overgrowth. And last thing was said in your meeting according to the paper was neighbors, the very important, which y'all agreed. But then my problem is. What is the issue with Pascal Road? Last time the county came out and cut back the bushes was August 8th and 9th and 24th. And I'm just wondering. What is it gonna take? A head-on collision or a dead body? Because there's been some close calls, I had a few myself. Because the people don't live there, they, they just joyride or whatever, not anticipating that maybe somebody's coming in their corners around those curves. And it's real dangerous. So I'm just wondering what is, is gonna take?
Okay. Appreciate you coming. Mr. Littlejohn. We've addressed this thing to several times on cutting these right of ways, and we bought a lot of machines. But we seem to not be getting work done like we should be. And, uh. Some of these roads do, there's a lot of them that need trimming back.
Can I ask a question, Chairman?
Yeah.
Go ahead. James, I know that the road's under contract to be paved. Can we still go out there and cut it or we can't?
My understanding, once it's under contract, we don't go on it until it's, until it's released. Um, but I did speak with, um, some, uh, gentlemen this morning with Thrift Brothers about the, um. When they were going to be going to Pascal Road, and they said soon as they finish laying the pipe on North McDonald Road, they'll be heading to Pascal Road, so.
So is it against the law for us to go out there, maybe more where they can see or?
I'm not sure the laws, I haven't, um.
I think it's just been, it's been the practice, it sounds like, of, of the county and maybe many counties that, you know, once a road is designated to be paved, then they wouldn't be spending a lot of money putting down gravel or things like that. Of course, if there is a, a dangerous situation and it is on county right of way, then I think, you know, it'd be warranted to address that no matter if the paving is coming or not.
Some of the hangover might not even be.
It may not be on county right of way.
I mean, it may not be far enough because some of it hang wheels, right? You know?
Mr. Chairman. So, you know.
Go ahead.
And I appreciate Mr. Littlejohn, you know, bringing that to this, despite his attention. Okay, and I understand, like I said, once the contractor's let for the paving and they, I, I guess when they actually get to doing the work, then I guess the wider improvement thing would be not to be going in there. But they haven't started on that road yet, right?
Right.
So is there any way that we could, uh. Facilitate getting someone out there to mow it, I mean, if it's that dangerous or the blind and?
We can send the motorhome out there.
Yeah, and I don't know how, we got the Public Works Director here, I don't know how his program of work is and everything, and I know they have certain thing, but is this something that the county employee would be doing or would this have to be with the contractor?
No, this would be county, this road's not under the contract.
This would be the county employees?
Yes, it would be county.
Okay. So I don't know, Mr. Thrift is here, you know, and I don't know, like I say.
We mowed that last year, that was one of the first places that they ran aside from them all. Then Mr. Shook talked about the other day, it's under contract and we mowed it last year. Usually they rip them, when they tear out the right of way, anything we might need to mow, they tear it out there anyway. So we was using our tax dollars in another area, Thrift Brothers looking on tear out right of way.
Okay. But, okay, so.
I would suggest let's go and mow it one time.
That's what I'd say.
To, because of the danger, and it is, I rode through there the other day, they are hanging over. If, if nobody has started working out there yet, I think we need to go mow it and get it where it went on.
Yeah, we'll send them out, put them in the works.
That's, that's what I was getting to, but I wanted to make sure I didn't get out my lane with the Public Works Director, because like you say, if, if once they start working, naturally we can't go in there. But if it's hanging over and it's creating a dangerous condition, and not just for the people to stay there, but people maybe don't even stay out there, that's not aware of how blind those curves are. And I think if it's the way we could get out there and mow that for now, you know, we try to do that.
We can do it.
Okay. All right. Let him go mow it. Okay, now we got one more item, the Hob Creek Bridge replaced. And I'm gonna ask Barry if he would.
Okay, uh, yes, I've had a bunch of calls out there, they gonna tear the bridge out, uh, I think, close to the end of the year. And there are no way around that bridge unless you go to Nichols or back to the, um, Tellmore Dixie Union Road, I think it's 17 miles through there. And I've talked to people, it's got elderly people on one side that they have to look after, they have to come across, you know? And I was just wondering if there's something that can be done, maybe a, a temporary bridge or. I've even thought about maybe if they would move the bridge over and build a new bridge and then tear the old one out, but, um. I talked to James about it a little bit, and he said the state, no, said it was gonna cost too much money to do that, but I, I just want to see what can be done, because there are a lot of people that's upset about it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I've had several calls on it.
Yeah.
Chairman, I got a question. So. And like I said, I just, whenever, I think when I come on here, maybe that's when they start talking about doing this bridge, but since that time, I guess it's been kind of dormant until now the contractor's let. So. How much involvement does the county have with this? I know it's a county bridge, but DOT is the one that's doing all this work?
Yeah, so from my understanding, DOT inspects the county bridges. And, uh, and they rate those bridges, and then once the bridges need to be replaced, they get put on a program through DOT to be replaced.
Okay, so with that being said, so. If the DOT is doing it, I would think that they would take into consideration, you know, whatever inconvenience they causing for those people that's in that area and try to work something out. Uh, and also, I don't know if the state representative, has he been contacted about it? Our representative, you know, to try to see if they can do something like Mr. Cox was saying about.
Yeah.
Because like I said, if you got people staying way off and they got, take care of people, something needs to be done, and I guess it should have really been thought about before they even let the contract out.
Right, they would have. I would think they would have had public hearings for that, um, bridge replacement, I think that's the normal process, but I'm not real sure. Thought I read some advertisements in the paper before public hearing or, um, that was sent, notifying the replacement of the bridge, but as far as contacting Burchette or James Burchette representative, I haven't heard if anybody's contacted him or, or, or what, so.
Some of, maybe the people that stay in there, that's gonna be impacted by it?
Right, the problem is that's such a wide drainage basin right there, um, outside the creek and all, it's, it's a wide area. Just, so it's not as simple as putting a, um, a runaround, like a pipe in and then filling it with dirt. Then you got to go back through all your environmental, with your, with your wetlands and your state, state waters, variances and all that.
When do they anticipate starting it?
If I'm not mistaken, I think the let was in November.
Let, November?
Or, no, the let was in November, I don't know if it's specific day, but they were gonna let the project in November.
Right. It'll be probably first next year sometime.
How long's this project cost to be?
I haven't heard definite, but I heard, um, I think about a year.
They said a year, I think, be out a year, so.
We've been knowing about this bridge a long time because they got several that, we got letters on that they were gonna replace, they're gonna replace some more.
Do, do they make a temporary bridge that you know of that the state could, could do, put across?
I'm not sure if the state has those or.
Who, who do we need to talk to?
We have talked to the area engineer to start with, and then move over and talk to Jessup, maybe, engineer and Jessup. I can make some phone calls to Jessup if you'd like me to.
About to say, I think we might better get on the phone, start talking to some people, be here before you know it.
Mr. Chairman, can Mr. Lincoln Felder come say something?
Yeah, come on.
Thank you, I want to read a letter that my wife did to come. Gives a little bit of the history of what's going on. And, uh. She wrote it, uh, "I am writing this today as a concerned member of the Bickley community, moved by a genuine desire to ensure our neighborhood remains a safe and united community for all who call it home. Bickley is solidly on board, but the Hob Creek Bridge. On CR 467 Bickley Highway desperately needs to be replaced. It is a big drop on the east side that will rattle your teeth, it's obviously quite unsafe. However, my recent conversations locally and at the state level with Don Digimon, Georgia State Bridge Engineer concerning the project, has led us discover that, to discover that no plans were made for construction of a bypass bridge to go around during the one year or more schedule to tear down and rebuild Hob Creek Bridge. Rather, a 27 mile each way off-site detour has been approved for us to travel daily. Hob Creek Bridge literally divides our community in half. Word County officials have said that this is a state project. When we spoke to the state, they revealed that they have received written approval and feedback from local community commission, ward of education, and emergency management when engineering the plans in 2022. It's my opinion neither the state nor the local leaders studied the design closely before signing off on it. As both local and state officials I've spoke with have told me the same thing. Oh, the local detour will be around the little dirt roads. That's the main problem, in this case, no one seemed to realize in 2022 that there are no little dirt roads, they go around Hob Creek. No paved roads, no dirt roads, not even a pink trail. Hob Creek was a wide swath land for many miles to the north and the south of the project. The map from the state shows their approved detour route for North Word County, west on Bickley Highway, south on Old Nichols Highway, south 158 to Tellmore, then north to Dixie Union, turn north on US 1, left at Bickley Highway, 27 miles one way. This will add 40 minutes to the each of the six daily school bus crossings. An additional 1.5 hours for every fire truck, EMS, sheriff, trash truck, or main route trip to North Word County. If 911 dispatch accidentally sends some help to address, they will arrive. Check on el, el, uh, they will arrive at the bridge and then must go around back 27 miles to get around. Residents needing to check on elderly parents heading to church or to a sick or disabled neighbor, farmers getting implements to their fields on the other side. Each of those trips will take an additional 1.5 hours, 54 miles. I've lived in Bickley all my life, we used to long drives to school, work, doctors, et cetera. But this will add another 1.5 for each trip to town for a year or more. Ask you to look closely at the map and realize the necessity of adding a runaround bridge to this project plan. The Georgia DOT told me that they received local feedback and signed approvals in 2022. However, when I spoke to the DOT about the situation, he encouraged us to follow through with our local officials to push for a change in the plan. We're asking you to look at that map. We ask you to make the calls and submit paperwork now to do what we can to correct this oversight. Time is of the essence to get a change approved on the DOT desk. We also ask you to let us know what we can do. The land on, around the bridge, Linda Denton Brooks has offered free use of extra land if needed to build a runaround bridge. Thank you for your attention, your care, and your commitment to Bickley and all Word County. I, you, sign, Judy Lincoln Felder.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln Felder.
James, who we need to talk to, the representatives or?
Did we see that?
Sorry, go ahead.
That map when they sent it?
Sir?
The map that they sent? We were, I remember something about that, they was, we was told there was roads to go around. But it wasn't.
I wouldn't. I don't remember seeing the map 22.
Oh, okay, what minutes was that in 22? What, when was those minutes? Can we?
That's what they said, 22.
I'd like to see that. You pull that for us, please, later, not today. I want, I want to see that.
It was before my time, but there are no way around it.
Yeah. Do you remember the first?
Vaguely, vaguely, I remember about, uh, a bridge, but you know, like I said, when you.
But it, that was never come up, did it?
Yeah, when they say the DOT, well then you, pretty much you know right then that we don't have a whole lot of input on it, but now it's like they trying to say, well, hey, y'all need to talk with the county about it, but. I would think, just like I said, school board, especially with school, those school buses, somehow that would have raised up a red flag somewhere around there.
There's six buses that hits that bridge a day, uh, fly, one in the morning, time in the morning, one of evening, is what I've been told.
Well, I'm, I'm glad they bring it to our attention now, but we do need to find out something because that's just, this is not acceptable right here.
I can call Representative Burchette and then also, uh, I'll call the engineer over to Jessup.
And then the people in Bickley. Yeah, get, get, do the same thing, you know, because this, this gonna impact a lot of people, not just people stayed there, but like I say, people that's maybe got to go that way or something.
And then we, um. We can make those calls, then maybe send a letter from the commission, ask for alternative.
Yeah, and you say you will talk with the DOT engineer?
Oh, well, I'll talk to them at, at Jessup.
Okay.
I don't think we knew that it was gonna be those 27 miles around it, did it? If we did approve it, I, I, nobody never said anything like that.
Well, when it was first brought to my attention now, um, my, first thing in my mind was, well, you can go Vonodore Road, go Carter Road, then I went with the maps and no, you can't. There's no, there's no dirt road around that, that creek.
I think we could build a temporary bridge.
So. We'll see what we can do.
I think, I think we can get.
We have one way you can look at it, if you come from there, it's probably only four miles difference if you get Bickley Highway to Nichols Highway to 158 to get to White House, that's one way. But if you're trying to travel within the community or heading anywhere else, here's where you run into your 21, 25, depending, because you're gonna have to go turn down Lucy Moore Road, all the way to Niesel, back up 158 to Bickley Highway again. That's where your mileage is gonna be, and then to get back, you gotta take that same route, or you're gonna take Bickley Highway to US 1, Tellmore Dixie Union Road, 158 and up that way. That's where your mileage is coming, but just as far as driving in White House, you're probably living there for about four more miles. But if you're looking at the whole turnaround, just be getting across the creek to Julie, coming to Mama's to Nana's house, and that's gonna take her another hour and a half.
Right.
So those, those are issues.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind for the minutes, I know we've got a number of attendees here that I think are in support of the letter that was read, could, if y'all don't mind, would you just raise your hand so we can get a quick head count?
Yeah.
Just so we'll have that refle- Just so we'll have that reflected in the minutes.
Can you count them?
Okay, I think I've got that. Thank you.
You get a count?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you, did you get her name? And address? Okay.
And you're going to try to find the minutes if you can about when this came up.
Yeah, I won't be able to find it before our regular meeting, but I'll.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying at some point in time.
I'll send it back.
Yeah.
But we need to work on that because if they did, DOT didn't tell us they was not going to put a runaround. See, I, e- every time I would think about putting a bridge in, you usually have a runaround. And I didn't think they were going to throw people that far out. I probably would have said something, but.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is one of the school board members here, is the school, Wendell, is the school board aware of all this?
Wh- did they know about this?
Um, we were made aware of it when we had a meeting. I'm, I'm Wendell Bailey, I'm representative of the school board. And I'm not, and I'm in District Five. It's not my district, but I'm from that area, so I'm familiar with.
Right.
But there are currently thirteen students that this is going to directly impact. And two different school bus routes that it would impact, you know, to.
Yeah.
You would, uh, you're looking at a, a significant time for these students to be getting on the bus and getting off the bus if there's no runaround. Like, you know, for them to be, you know, so it's, that would be a, a detrimental impact to, I think, to our, our school system. Because some of these students have to transfer also, and when they get off a bus at another school and then transfer onto the, their school of destination. So, it's, uh, it would be a, a hard impact on some of those, you know, for them to do that. But we were just made aware of that recently through Mr. Cox here in a meeting that was taking place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Uh, I'm Ronnie Gayle, I live in the Bickley community on, uh, Good Corner Road.
Okay.
I'll give them all the dirt they need if they need to.
Okay.
Excuse me, sir, was that Ronnie or Donny?
Ronnie.
Our, our. Thank you.
Ronnie Gayle, okay. Y'all got that. I'm sorry about that. That, I think it's some really misunderstanding on it, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
We were thinking that you'd probably have a runaround, you know? I don't know, and y'all, this has just really come to me but the last few, last week or so that I've knew this. But, uh, we're going to try to see what we can do about getting a runaround before they go, just cut everybody off like that. We can't, I don't think we, we want to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I will say, I just imagine that whenever it was explained to the commission that they use that four mile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that four mile distance and not talking about what y'all are having to travel to go from, you know, to your neighbor's house or to your mama's house or whatever, or the bus routes. They're not considering that. They were considering the four mile difference and if it was just a four mile difference of everything, nobody would be complaining.
Right.
But, uh, but it's twenty-seven miles, I'd be complaining too.
Yeah.
That's why I think we definitely need to get those minutes and see what was in there for us. You know?
Okay. We appreciate y'all coming and we'll, uh, we're going to do what we can and see what we can do to, to help y'all to get a, either a runaround or something. We got, we're going to do something about it. And, John, we appreciate you coming. We're going to try to do something about that. Okay? Anything else? All right, let's move on. Agenda items. Approved title search and appraisal and purchase of right of way for North McDonald Road. James, you, 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 all this is for, is this for the right of ways? Is they? Uh, we, we, do we have appraisal pick, somebody to, can you do it?
We have, I have a, we have a pick and appraisal. I know that the county attorney's office has an appraisal, the appraisal that they usually work with on these, so I would probably use somebody that they're familiar with and, because I'm not familiar with any of those appraisers.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what we like to do, and I don't have a specific one in mind to recommend to you today, but what we like to do is have someone that has experience in case that, it, testifying in court, just in case that, and supporting their appraisal in the event that the appraisal amount is not accepted, they would ultimately have to go and testify in court and support that appraisal.
Yeah, it'll have to be a registered.
That's exactly right, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, also, I just, for clarity, I know we discussed this a while back about the right of way. I think we might have been talking about the one on, uh, Auburn Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Which is pretty much the same thing as talking about right here, but okay, I know we said we authorized you to a highest appraiser and to obtain the appraisers on such property, but it says, and to purchase such property, so the purchase would that have to come back before us?
It would, well, if you give, if you give me the authority to purchase it not exceeding appraisal price, then we can go ahead and do that.
That's what we've done.
Okay, that's, that's why I wanted to make sure I was clear on that because I know we talked about that and if, if appraiser, if it came in at the praise prize, you were authorized to go with that, but if it's over the praise prize, then you didn't have the authority to.
Any, any negotiations that be done with the commission.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Let me ask you another thing. Is this appraiser, is they, is they supposed to be DOT approved?
The one that we have, the one that I'm thinking of, um, I know that we worked with just recently, but that's been on Tiff County Project, so I'm going to find out who she uses over here. But, um, he is DOT certified. Now, I don't think that would be absolutely required in this context, um, but mi- you know, many people who, who are in that business, some, you know, some are also, so.
Yeah, I know Auburn Avenue and North McDonald, all those roads would be under DOT. I mean, they should be, uh, I mean, we should use their standards, I feel like.
Yes, and I think most, most people who will be, we will be using, and we will double check to be sure on that, but I know the gentleman that I'm thinking of, he is.
Okay. All right, is anything else on that? Did anybody got any, got anything? Uh, let's move that one over. Okay, B. Purchase request for pipe for Ammon Road Drainage Project and Inventory Stock. What kind of pipe is you, you want to order?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll ask our road, our fellow works director to come up and explain what his question.
What kind of pipe do you want?
Some horse, some C and P and some various sizes and lengths. Because we're going to redo Ammon Road. Do that thing right there down the water and redo that storm drainage and then the bulk of that, the rest of that order will be for stock, for driveways and other cross drains that can go there following into Ware County.
We're going to put, uh, metal pipe, cross drains and side drains?
Yes, sir, it's all there.
Uh, we don't need to, we, we need, if we're going to put pipe up, I thought we had picked our standards up a little bit. We were going to do concrete pipe.
It, it's.
Every time you turn around, these metal pipes rusting out.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this went back and forth, and I don't think a decision was ever finally reached of what we're going to use, whether we're going to, um, completely use concrete or completely use metal or, or a, uh, combination, so.
Left either or.
Um, it's been left as either or, but I mean, we'll do whichever, whichever way the commission wants to do.
No, it shouldn't be either or. It ought to be, if we're going to do concrete pipe, we ought to go with concrete pipe.
So, I know under any paved road, we're doing concrete, but on the dirt roads, we've been putting metal in, so.
And.
And that's the practice was there before I became manager, just what we've been practicing.
Yeah. Chairman, and then, you know, like I said, this issue's come up before about concrete versus metal, but really it's going to be predicated on the cost, because at one time, the concrete pipe was a whole lot more expensive than the metal. And that's why we resort kind of using the metal, but then it came down to where the concrete pipe was about the same price. But I understand also you got to fight the end of labor. With the concrete, it's more labor intensive as far as installing it versus the, the, uh, metal pipe, so. And you say it's on dirt roads, that's not going to be paid?
Yeah, if we don't put, I don't put metal under asphalt.
Okay, so, and I, I think that's one of the things that we got too. So, right now, there.
Excuse me.
Does the metal co- pipe cost, is about the same as concrete?
No, it's, it's, it's about fifteen dollars a foot cheaper than metal is right now.
Metal's cheaper than the concrete now?
Correct. You know, a while back, it was almost within a couple of dollars either way, so, but, but now the metal has come down.
But then it requires more when you put the concrete pipe down.
It takes a little more time to put concrete down, but then it, it does last longer, but, you know, in twenty, twenty-five years, when the metal's done fell away, if we, without proper maintenance, uh, the concrete pipe, the roots just broke through the joints and everything, the storage joint, so you ended up tearing it out too. So, you're really not, really not, uh, gaining anything by putting a lot of concrete pipe in in so many places.
It, uh, we're seeking the easier, softer way.
Sure.
We're seeking a easier, softer way.
Well, if you want.
That hurts sometimes.
Well, if you want to put concrete pipe, concrete pipe.
That's what I.
You know, you're looking at dollars here too.
Yeah.
What's the total of the pipe, everything you want to?
I think you got, uh.
Thirty thousand, six ninety-five.
Thirty thousand.
It's going to be, that's going to go in the yard though, right, for?
That is probably about eight thousand dollars going in the yard.
And that's for like, driveway pipe.
Driveway pipe and cross drain.
And most driveway pipe you put in is metal, right?
They're metal.
Where's all this pipe going on, on Ammon Road?
There's a bunch of cross drains there. It's just fell flat through and ain't there no more.
Well, it. I'd like to table this right here. Let me look at some of that. Are you for that?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
The what?
Let's look into this a little more. I don't know what this, because I don't know, all these pipes got to be changed on Ammon Road either. I mean, we're not paving it.
Big boxcar pipes I'm not changing.
We're not paving it, are we?
So, you've already went out and?
Yes, sir.
So.
Yeah, some of them don't need it, but basically starting about off the highway going through there to get to that. I think it's Sweat Farms or McDonald Road.
Yeah.
You know, there's a couple on that end that we ain't got to touch, where they got that canal off there, but back from there on back toward about off the highway, they pretty much all have.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, based on what you evaluate, this is the pipe, the one for the, uh, Ammon Road, that's what you need for that, then the other pipe will be for, to have there so that we are.
Because the problem with that is they, some of those pipes are large pipe. And so you're going to get a, a half order, so we can order, finish out that load and save us some freight, and we'll have stock on the yard or driveways or, or any other emergency might come up, because we use pipe regularly.
Yeah. Some of them just need cleaning out.
Some of them, yeah, and that comes old horrible.
And what is it, metal?
And concrete. A little three foot joints of pipe. You try messing with them, they done wiggle loose and pull the roots. They break, but they ain't no wiring.
That's on the metal, I mean, on the concrete?
That's on the old concrete pipes, isn't it? Used to, used to, back when the chairman was used to, and they, I, we used to use this pipe. Now, now everything comes with an eight foot pipe, eight foot length, a joint of twenty-four inch pipe, probably, what, sixteen, seventeen hundred pound now?
Ten mile.
Yeah, and then the, the old pipe they used to put in was three and four foot joints. And you could take three or four men, take a rope, tote it in the ditch. And there just wasn't no weight, but in, in its day, it was top of the line. Now you have newer materials, newer way of doing it, it's better, but it costs more.
And also, it's not something they just, you can get tomorrow. It takes time.
No, the metal pipe is about a, a five to six week lead time on it. Concrete's a lot better now because they got two plants running over there, so the lead time on it ain't so bad. And if y'all want to spend money on concrete, we'd be glad to put it in.
Yeah, I think I'd put con- concrete and all them cross drains.
Even on the dirt roads?
Yeah. You pave it, it's already in there. If don't, you have to pave it, you got to take that metal pipe out and throw it away, put concrete in. And Ammon Road may get paved. It's on the list.
I, I think it's on the list or.
So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
If it were, if it was in the wall, but sooner or later, we're going to have to have some material to work with.
Okay.
So. So, if we just go on what, what we got right now, or either as a chairman saying, talking, ta- taping it, to find out, I guess, what, what the price of the concrete pack will be versus the metal?
Yeah, and looking to see what, I, I wanted to see what we're going to do there. I, this is the first I've heard about draining Ammon Road.
That's one of the first, that's one of the first roads I got called on when I took this job.
Yeah. And, uh, it, it needs a lot of greater work done on it, because it's crooked as a black snake down through there. They go around the light poles, keep some more on the other side right away.
Ain't quite that many.
Have, have you got? Go down through there and look at it. That's where your buddy lives.
I ain't got no buddy out there. Too many of them.
I don't live far from here now.
Tatum?
Uh, have you got your, um, driveway pipe and that pipe separated out or, or is it all together?
It's all kind of lumped together right there, because that, the six, I think on your price, I can't remember, there's, there's a large price and a small price, seven, six, seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, six.
That's the pipe that we're going to finish out the second load, so that we would, would be called with, with freight.
I just know we probably need to get some, uh, driveway pipe, because you got people wanting them every day.
Yeah. Twenty-four inch.
How long would it be before you can start on Ammon Road if you had the pipe?
Call in location, start it right next week.
Okay.
So, you want to get pressed on concrete or?
I'd, I'd say, oh, Chairman, he knows more about this road building than you know about road building and pipe, so I don't know a lot about it, so I'm having to rely on.
If you're going to pave that thing in the next ten years, I'd say by all means, put concrete pipe in there. It fits fifteen, twenty years down the road. Engineers will come in there, he's going to redesign the whole new storm drain system anyway, and want to take that in cross drain pipe or something there. So, you know, the, the metal's going to last that long.
How long will it take you to figure out the difference in the price?
I can do it tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Let's, let's do that and, and then we'll sit down and, um, order what we need. See, see the difference in the price.
And also, I guess, as far as the cost of installing it too, it costs more.
Yeah, it takes a little bit longer to do it, but I mean, you know, it's, we already got the men and the poles and the equipment there, so it's not like a contractor had to figure out who I earned to rip this. Do you already, we already doing something?
That Ammon Road is, uh, is, is, we wanting to pave that thing for the grid.
I mean, I say, if you can pave it in the next ten years, put concrete in.
James, where's this money coming from? One percent money or?
For the pipe. It wa- for any, um, cross drains, it will come out at one percent, but anything you buy for driveways, that's a new driveway you have to pay for, a general fund.
Have we got money in one percent to buy?
We do.
Cross pipe?
We got it, yeah.
Let's buy the concrete pipe.
Yeah, let's, uh, let's change it over and find out about that concrete pipe first.
So, we're going to buy it or we're going, and we're going to move it to the agenda, or we're going to wait and, or we, I mean, you want us to go ahead and get the concrete pipe? You're going to move to the agenda? Which one are we going to do?
Well, I think we need to, because what about, if, if we, if we start, if we pave that road and if it works out, it's going to pave in the next five, six years.
Well, if we've got that, I mean, we'll just put concrete.
Maybe put concrete pipe in, then use metal for side.
And, uh, just use the, if you're going to use the metal on the side drains, it's okay, but I'd, I'd put concrete on it, the road.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you, definitely you're going to pave it in five years, put concrete bottoming and cross drain.
How, how many?
And you might need the size. And you might need to size it a little.
I'd have to go back and count them up there.
If it's gonna be paved, you might need to size it a little bit bigger than that, just uh, because for the future, if it's paved, then it need to be for.
I think I've sized some of them, it's thirty-inch pipe, I have some thirties on there.
What do you think about that? Very close to get paved, it needs to be paved. I mean uh.
Yeah, they, they some thirty's.
Size where it can be paved. Okay.
I, I, I would really like to know what's the difference in the price on that cement versus metal, I mean, I don't have a problem, but.
Okay.
We don't wanna, you know.
I can get it, I can get the price of tomorrow, just figure out the difference. Send it to James and we'll let y'all know.
Okay. Get the price on the concrete pipe.
Alright, good work. Thank you.
Okay. E S G Industrial Park Waterloo. We've had that thing before. Mr. Burris, you know about that Waterloo, don't you?
Yes, I remember they came in about it, and uh, this been about, what, two or three years ago?
Right here.
Yeah.
Is. Okay.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I'm uh, I'm Charlie Bridges, I work for E S G.
E S G.
And I'm the, we're the engineers for the city, the white crumps. We've got a project, a water line, a transmission project, and the idea is that we're gonna connect the city uh industrial park system to the city town system. And to do that, we've gotta put a sixteen-inch water line uh partially in county right away. And so I met with county manager last week, and he suggested that I come today and kinda explain to you what the purpose of the project is, uh what exactly it is that we're gonna do, and then answer the question.
Yes, did you say sixteen or twelve? Plan said twelve.
Twelve inch, I'm sorry.
He said, I said, that pipe done grown.
Yeah, let me ask you something, what is the uh main? Goal for this to happen?
So, the, it's, it's mainly to connect the two systems together.
Yeah.
So that we can move water in both regions, so there'll be a booster station in between, so we can pump from the industrial park, where we've got two wells into town, or we can pump from town out to the industrial park. Right now, uh, we've got way more usage in town than we do in the industrial park, and so it's um, we would probably be moving water from the industrial park towards town, but it can't go the other way, if uh, if you get a, a big industrial user in the industrial park, or um if there's a fire or something out there, those pumps can pump in the other direction.
Okay.
Yeah, and this, i- this will be not a distribution line, right, so especially in the county, um that's Satilla, the service delivery area, so there will be no service connections on this pipe, this will just be to get water from point A to point B, no, no service lines connected to it. There will be some fire hydrants mainly to just blow off water after we charge, or blow off air after we charge the line, pressure it up.
Okay, so y'all own both systems?
Yes, sir.
You just want a right of way to go, to tie it together?
That's right, a- and part of the goal too is to combine those two permits, right now each system has its own permit, and there's some costs associated with sampling and that kinda thing, it would save the city a little bit of money if we could consolidate those into two, into one permit. So that's another kind of a secondary goal, but the primary goal is just to physically connect those two together. E P D won't let you combine those permits, uh unless the systems are physically tied together with the pipe.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. How, how many wells y'all got out there in industrial parks?
Two in the industrial park and two back in town.
They, they two wells there?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Um, so, so I remember this situation was just about to come up whenever I was on the city commission, and um, the city desperately needs more water for the city. Um, they've only got two wells, and they're in town, and both have been about a hundred feet of one another. And so if something catastrophic happened right there at the city's water plant, the cell, whole city would be out, would, about be without water. And so by having this connection out there in the industrial park, which the city owns that water system, they would be able to supply water back to the city through that. You know, this project's probably a good bit cheaper than drilling a well these days, I mean, drilling a well, I think the project we were looking at was about a million and a half dollars to drill a well, and that was back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, so I imagine it's about two and a half million now for the same project, and so by them doing this, this is a um little bit quicker fix, um a- a- and it's gonna be a, a, a valuable one, especially for the city, so you know, I'd, I'd be all for them being able to get that pipe through that right of way, go ahead and get them taken care of.
And um, Commissioner, that's a great point, and also drilling another well is not completely off the table, depending on where the usage goes, but we probably, if we were to drill another one, we would probably wanna drill it out near the industrial park, because I think you can get more water out there than you can in town, and that would allow us to move water back towards town, still.
Okay. Is the uh level system be the same that telemetry would be to? Uh, it, it would raise it or?
Not, it, so the telemetry's not connected yet, because none of the wells are connected, is that what you're asking?
Would they all be connected then?
They will be, yes.
They will be, after you get that in, then you'll take.
That's right.
Telemetry and put it all together.
Correct, yes, sir.
Charlie.
I did that one time on a project.
Will, will that water from the industrial park go to the water plant up here to their um dosage tank, or will it go directly to towers and town?
In the industrial park.
Okay, and then it'll be, go, it'll go, once it gets here, it'll go to the towers.
That's right.
Around here, okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate you coming, but the last time whenever this was brought up, there was several concern that our engineer and the inspector had at that time about going forward with this, and one was, would the water line be laid parallel with our water line on the same side, or would it be on the other side of the street? I mean, and that, that was one of the thing, because what come up was, okay, if you have a, a leak, a bust or whatever, rusture, then, you know, the county residents would be calling, if you get roads washed out and all that kinda stuff, so.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and I got the minister, from when uh Gene and uh, I think Brandon was here at that time, and as far as Satilla water, have you all talked with them or?
Yes, sir, uh, we have, and in fact, I met uh with Mr. Gene when he was still with the county, and he, he voiced that same concern.
Right.
And what he and I uh ke- kicked around was if we needed to, so to answer your first question, most of the way, our water line is on the opposite side of the road from Satilla. Um, but now that's a product of, you know, how crowded that side of the right of way is, you know, there's all kinds of utilities.
Right.
So uh, for the most part, it just worked out that we're on the opposite side, but we talked about putting signage uh over the top of our pipeline, you see it on top of gas lines sometimes, where it's got contact information, so if there's a leak or whatever, that we'll have the E S G operations contact number on there, make sure Satilla doesn't get any phone calls, and obviously if there's damage to county road, if, in the event of a, of a blowout, the, the city will, will repair at their cost.
Yeah, and you know, another thing is, hey, I haven't heard mentioned, is, I had this information from when they came first time, it's a pro- it's a proposed route, but there's also an alter- alternate right, route. At that time, and the alternate route wouldn't have to get as much kinda right of way, and also, uh, even on the kinda right of way, a mile and a, one point three mile would be dirt, so you wouldn't have to be worrying about, you know, cutting and, you know, things of that nature, or cutting into pavement, or, I don't even know, on this dirt road, I don't know if there's many houses on that road, or what, on Fresh, Freshwood Street?
Yes, sir, I'm, that must have been before I got involved with it.
Okay, well, I, I have, I have that, and it was, it had, had the two different routes, and uh what we were saying was, we could support it at that time, possibly if it was on that al- alternate right, route, and not on the proposed route, which is, you know, uh, and then you would, another thing too, on that proposed right, proposed route, you would have to jack and board the state street, state route, and the double train, okay?
Yes, sir.
On the alternate, alternate route, you wouldn't have that, you know?
Uh, that, that's right, um, a- and part of the goal is we're trying to tie into the, there's a tank on M L K, in the city system right there.
Right down, by shallow church up there.
Yes, sir, that, that, that was the goal, was trying to get to that storage tank, so which is part of the reason that we chose the route that you did. Uh, and I mean, that's not to say there wouldn't be, there couldn't be an alternate route, but that's, that's the one where we, we've done settled at this point.
Okay, and uh, and the last thing, whenever we had that, when they came up, one of the thing that I said, that we need to get with the E S G, the city, the county, and all the players, to make sure everybody understand what's going on, and try to see what's gonna be best, you know, and where it wouldn't impact anyone more than other, you know?
Right, yes, sir. I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
And I g- I guess that's part of the reason I'm, I'm here today, but uh your, your county manager was pretty clear, there won't be any cutting of county roads, we're gonna jack and board directional drill all the, all the county roads. So, no cutting of any road, and, you know, like I said earlier, no service connections, and um, uh, Mr. Elmer probably knows, but service connections are when your, when your pipe starts to fail, you got a bunch of points of failure in there when you're, when you're connecting uh service lines, and there won't be any of that here. The only connections that you have um are gonna be, there'll be some fire hydrants, like I said, mainly to blow air off the line. Well, but that's it.
And, another thing, one thing too, Mr. Chairman, out there, in industrial park, the problem they have out there, they not using much water, and that's creating, then you got like stale water for like a better time.
Yeah, that's, you nailed it, and that's part of the reason that we wanna do this project, is right now, we got a lot of usage back in town, and we can move that water back towards town instead of it going stale in the industrial park tanks, that's exactly right.
Can we get Will to come up? Will, you see, I saw him back there, uh, if you don't mind that, Will, are you uh okay with this?
I just, I actually saw the plans this afternoon, uh, after lunch, I actually reviewed, I, I burned the route they wanted to take. Um, as Commissioner Burris kinda addressed, our concern was making sure that two water mains weren't on the same shoulder of the road. Uh, that just creates a maintenance nightmare in the future for both utilities to have to maintain. Um, but yes, you know, the service delivery area, they're clearly stated that there wouldn't be any customers in the county, but booze to the city, it's just a transmission line coming through our area. Um, but yeah, and it's like any, any other utility, we don't want any one coming through cutting services and doing things, but um, but yeah, as long as those lines are on opposite sides of the road, so that the maintenance will be easier in the future.
Okay.
We're understanding why they need the water connections, so, but yeah, we've had, had some conversations other than, you know, just some general topics, you know, before the meeting today, but.
Right.
But yes, sir, but, but we're watching on, and, and uh, did see the path they wanted to take, and it looks like about eighty percent of that is on opposite side from where we are right now.
Okay. Alright. So if you don't have no problem with it, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We should be good, I say, long, we, we have some communication up front on construction, make sure that if, if something happens, that something's damaged on our line, we have a chance to have an inspector there, make sure everybody's put back properly, you know, the common courtesy with construction.
Okay, is all the other utilities uh agreeable with it, that, that where you going, like A T and T and some of them?
Yes, sir.
They are not over there where you got everything, all that worked out?
Uh, part of the design was trying to avoid as much of those utilities as we could, fortunately, on, most of the route, all the utilities are on the same side of the road. So when we flopped over to the other side, just because it was, for the most part, it was open, most of the time, the gas and the water and the, the fiber is, if they located it properly, which is a if sometimes, um, then it's uh, it, it's, it's all, we're on the o- other side of the road. Yes, sir, and we would definitely, um, when we have our pre-construction meeting, um, this one's a large enough project, we would have Will there anyway, but we'll also invite A T and T and um Atlanta Gas and eh eh whoever needs to be there, all those utility companies will be invited to the pre-construction meeting.
Pre-construction, okay.
Regardless to which route you take, you still wanna try to end up coming out there on M L K for that tank there?
Yes, sir, that, that, if we can get to that tank, that, that gives us a storage area on both ends.
Okay. Alright, we appreciate you coming, I think, has anybody got anything else to ask you?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would suggest, if, if the commission decides to do this and allow this, is that we get a new set of plans showing all the cuts, change them to uh boards?
Yes, sir, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because I saw that, you didn't have them there.
Yes, sir.
And, and we need a M O, M O U, um, saying that everybody's on board, Satilla, and everybody's on board.
That's M O U.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Let's carry that one over. Alcohol license request, nineteen hundred block of Brunswick Highway. Now, where's uh, John, come on. I mean uh. That's.
Hold on, Ms. Shelley. Hold on just a second, let us present it, and then you can answer any questions.
Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll present it.
You gonna present?
I will, okay. Um, this is a request by Ms. Shelley Endelotes to um, for a beer, wine, and liquor uh consumption on premise license. Um, the project is on the corner of U S eighty-two and, is it Dixon?
Right.
Layton, Layton Street, next to C V S, there's a C V S, and there's a vacant field, and then there's the little dirt road, and this is where um she wants to locate her uh bar, um club, and so she's applied, she's re-invented the building to uh meet some code, meet the codes, and um before you is the application, and also included in there is um some pictures, where I think she kinda explains in words about the parking, um, and then her application did not show any disqualifiers that would prevent her from having a um, obtaining alcohol license.
Okay.
If you got any questions, or Mr. Loach, she's here.
Thought that was in the city, but it's in the county?
One, the city stops at the dirt road.
One block over. One block over.
Yeah, about one block over, I guess.
Well, I think the city stops at the dirt road, and then it's the county.
Yeah.
So. The vacant lot next to it is in the um city, and then the county stops at the dirt road.
Yeah.
This will be right behind the new motel they building up there?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was uh Bert Davis's grocery store, I don't know if y'all remember him, he was a county commissioner.
Is it old Davis?
Yeah, Red Davis.
Yeah, Red Davis, he was a commissioner.
Yeah.
What name commissioner was that? I believe he was. Yeah, Red Davis, okay. Alright, does anybody got any questions on it?
There's no disqualifiers?
No, sir.
She meets all the qualifications?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, anybody? Anything, anybody got anything on it? Anybody got it?
No.
No, carry it over there.
Yeah.
Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, E surplus request for M A generator.
Jonathan, maybe, Jonathan, you come up here.
He got a.
Now I apologize, I printed the picture of the generator, and they get off print.
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is a request to surplus uh, uh military generator that we acquired about ten years ago. Um, we, we never was able to get the generator to work, and so that uh, we have uh decided that we don't need it any longer, taking up space, and so we like to request a, a county surplus generator, it's an old military generator.
Okay. It, and you, we got, what we gonna do is let somebody else have it?
We, we have a request from another county, a nearby county has requested supports off of it.
Right.
And uh, and that being said, that they're willing to uh compensate what we have in it.
And let them have it.
To let them have it, and they can use the power.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Their parts are fixed there.
What are you talking about?
Their, our parts are fixed their generator, but their parts won't fix ours.
Right.
And it's a government surplus generator, we, we, we got it like that, so we have to give it to another government.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Uh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Let's carry that one over. Alright, the manager's comment?
I don't have any.
Commission comment?
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
James, have you heard anything on the uh overpass on um State Street out there?
They moved the let date to December.
To December, they keep pushing it back or?
They do, uh, last out, one, uh, time I checked before, the let date was September, and then I checked again, that was. They do, uh, last, uh, one, uh, time I checked before, the let date was September, and then I checked again, it was, it was December. Um, and I'm not sure, I didn't get any explanation why it's been moved back.
So you don't know why they keep moving it back?
No, sir.
Did they ever, uh, Lewis and Rollerson, have they decided what they gonna do, or do you know?
We have not, we received a letter that they would be reaching out to, um, to all their customers, and letting us know what their plans are, um, but in the meantime, if it goes down, we'd have to just go to the, either the truck stop or the convenience stores, or anywhere that offer, offers fuel up.
You don't know if they got any kinda plan in place of what they gonna do though, um?
I don't know, um, I, there's rumor that they purchased the corner of Blackshire Avenue and, and State Street there. But I haven't seen anything writing.
I just asked, cause I do wanna live long enough to drive across it, so, seem like they pushing it back a little further.
Yeah, Mr. Gary wants the same thing, so.
Oh, okay.
What on the Old Bean Avenue too?
When the Old Bean Avenue, we moving forward it, the attorneys have the, uh, properties, and they're working on the, um, on title searches, and, and so we'll move forward to getting those appraised and, and, um, buying those as well.
Looks like we might drive across it before we do that one, then, um.
It's gonna be close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rush them up if you can, if you know what I'm telling, we want it fixed.
Any more comments, commission? All y'all that came from, for the Hard Creek Bridge, we appreciate y'all's input and interest in letting us know too that we need to, we need to wake up and see what we can do for y'all. Cause we need a way around that bridge, I don't want y'all to drive out for every time you turn around on it. We're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do about getting a temporary bridge or something. I'll push as hard as I can.
And, and that's probably what happens, Mr. Chairman, on that, when you think of a detour, you think of going around it, you don't think of starting at the, at the, and I'm just saying for, for this conversation, you don't think about starting at the bridge, and then having to come just to the other side of the bridge.
I know, yeah.
So you're always thinking, I'm on this side, and it's taking me this long to go this way, if I'm on this side, take this long, so I think that's probably what happened on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, to mention all of them, at the regular meeting, we go into recognize Mr. Darwin Lee, if any of them wanted to stay to do that, and I mean to be there when he done that.
That's right, we're gonna have a dedication or something, yeah, okay. Appreciate that, but. All right, anymore? No, how long we want?
Okay.
Ten, ten minutes. Starts at five, so.
Five, so we got, okay, we got, we got plenty of time. All right, now here, basically do the journey. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.